Okay, we are back out of executive session at 7:10. And, do you want to go ahead?
Well, there's Dennis, who may just make his statement. Let me just go on to the next segment.
Dennis has resigned from the commission. He's had family illnesses that he has to take care of, and so he'll no longer be part of the board.
So, let's see. It's too bad. I guess we'll have to find somebody else.
And Sean is not here tonight, so.
There was a subcommittee that was appointed to take a look into you guys' research.
I'm here, kid. Just try to work here.
Okay. We will do this again.
There's three things here too, if I can come closer.
We have a subcommittee report, which the commission has accepted as a report. Lori and I were the people who did the investigation, and we started off with your guys, the people who put in all those findings and criticisms. And I think the format was that we had that square, and then we filled out a square beside it with what our findings were. And you can have copies, if you would like. I'll probably pack them, and that way it's transparent. The purpose of the committee was to investigate the substance of charges against the director of Northwoodview Park and Recreation District, and the operations of the commission, and to report back to the commission at its May meeting. So, we did that. Do you want me to go through the process and everything, or just tell you generally? Okay, well, the process, the subcommittee thoroughly investigated each charge allegation, including interviews with NWPRD personnel, Bill Walker, the state auditor, the county auditor, the district's attorney, and scrutinized supporting documents, the historic meeting minutes, bylaws, emails, relevant RCWs, and the 2008 employee handbook, N-LAC code of conduct, conduct employment agreements, and district files to ensure an objective and inclusive evaluation of each claim and allegation, and reached a number of specific and general Our findings were, for ease of reference, the detailed findings in response to allegations against Director Bill Walker are included in the appended document, which includes subcommittee findings to each set of allegations. So, you can just look down the boxes and what we found. Summary conclusions. We are comfortable, that's the two of us, that there is no legal validity to the claims' allegations brought against Bill Walker. The commission hired Bill Walker in June 2012 and gave him direction to exercise his discretion on administrative duties as defined in his contract and by district bylaws. Bill assumed many mismanaged district components when he took on the district director's position. He also stepped into the role with a relatively inexperienced board. This culminated in the director making many decisions that were not popular, and subsequently led the board to recognize that the flexibility that had prescribed in the director's boundaries needed to be contained. With increasing scrutiny and with new commissioners serving the district, it has become apparent that a broader oversight of district policy and administrative decisions is needed. In board meetings since January 2013, the board has given guidance to Bill Walker to modify the parameters under which he operates. The board must take responsibility for the citizens' displeasure with previous decisions' outcomes, as it initially established loose boundaries for Bill Walker in managing the district. Legally, the director has operated within his duties. Broader questions of government will be addressed by the board and the director during his annual performance evaluation meeting in June, that's next month. And that's sort of the broader social side of this. Just, we had to look at, because of the couching of the charges, we looked at strictly in legal terms, and whether they were, in our minds, something that was actionable. The data you provided was really good, in many cases, and it certainly helped the investigation, and it was used as a foundation for us to evaluate what was happening. The broader evaluation on the job is next month, not now. This is the response to the charges, and that was our mandate. Otherwise, we'd been doing this for nearly six months.
That's great. Any more board issues, before we move on to public comment?
Well, I just don't know. Yeah, maybe public comments would be a time that you can start taking a look at those squares and reacting.
During the public comment?
That's what I said.
Has everyone signed the public comment form? Where is it?
No.
Yeah, that's right. Perfect. We are going to limit public comment to two minutes each.
I'll take the first two and raise the other one. Emily, Shayna. Emily?
Emily?
There you go.
Swimming is a big part of my life. Let me rephrase that. Swimming is my life. When I joined swimming six years ago, I wanted to be a part of the team and improve my swimming, so I could at least swim a couple lengths in the pool without having to stop in the middle and gasp for breath. Even though I wasn't one of the slower swimmers, I still felt like I was as much a part of the team as anyone else. When I started, I had no intention of improving as fast as I did, swimming at the level of intensity I do now, for being so dedicated to the sport. All of my success is from the help of coaches and a supporting team. One of the former coach Neil Ronnie was fired last fall. We didn't just lose a coach, we lost a team. While swimming for Coach Neil, I learned how to be a competitive swimmer and encouraging teammates, a hard worker, and a role model to younger swimmers. Neil's philosophy was hard work and team building. Yes, there were definitely days I dreaded coming to practice or feared what challenges were ahead that day, but now I feel like he set our standard targets and we have something to reach for. I remember him always saying that if we weren't willing to work hard, then we shouldn't have come to practice at all, because we ended up dragging the whole team down to this. A team is like a machine. When one part isn't doing its job, the whole machine breaks down. With the new coach that has been installed, I fear that N-WAC has lost its meaning of team. Every day I come to practice, and I hear swimmers, including me, complaining about the set, or rambling on about how much they don't want to be there, or declaring they aren't going to work hard, or sitting in the bathroom for half the practice, or even just skipping out on sets because they don't feel like it. These negative influences are bringing down the whole team, and the coach, whose job is to instill unity, is not taking initiative to create a supportive, hardworking team. Bill Walker's promise to bring a new coach that would better N-WAC has clearly not been fulfilled. What makes a coach a good coach? I can tell you in one word: dedication. When a coach is dedicated to his or her job, the swimmers are more likely to follow in their footsteps. If I had a coach that I can now, four and a half years ago, when I moved up to the junior team, I would have quit swimming years ago. Neil Ronnie was the only person who tended to pursue his sport, wishing to be the dedicated swimmer that I was, under his leadership. I have never seen a man so dedicated to his job in my life. He had a charge to make sure he was alternating strokes at practice. He was never late. I only saw him leave the pool that once during practice, and that was for an emergency bathroom break while he left one of the advanced swimmers in charge. With the new coaches, they seem more dedicated to their cellphones, each other, or even the grab. I could never get any feedback, encouragement, or the occasional yelling to get back to work. I feel like I am a swimmer aimlessly swimming without anyone to guide me. Why am I paying all this money for swimming when I could be getting the same workout at laps? If I wanted, I could go into an exact same set and get the same amount of benefit, because the coach isn't adding anything to the team. This summer, I will be moving to Houston and starting a new chapter in my swimming. I am sad to leave my friend's old team, but I am excited to move for a team where everyone feels accepted, wants to work for them, and has a coach that helps them reach their goals. Ever since Bill Walker retired last year, the pool has honestly been a dramatic death and has been involving a lot of the community. Everyone has different opinions on who should be running things and who should be coached. I am not saying my opinion is better than anyone else's, but after swimming for six years, I know how a team should function, and right now, it is definitely a mess. I just hope something changes or something is done to improve the condition that I'm in. We need someone who is willing to step up, take charge, and dedicate themselves towards swimmers and the team.
Thank you.
Which level of swimming are you?
What?
What group?
I'm on the junior team.
You're on the junior team. Who's the coach for the junior team?
Bill Patterson.
Bill? It's Coach Bill.
Patterson.
Patterson, okay. Alan, yes? The coach, Bill Patterson, is over the junior senior. Colleen Danigan is the pool. Jared is the silver. Okay, there is the pool. I just had to sort of figure it out.
Molly, when a timer goes off, you have to stop talking. It's just out of respect for the public meeting, we have a lot of comments here, so if you could get through it, and if you hear a beep, I'll turn it off, but just try and finish up, okay? Thank you.
In November 2012, when Neil Ronnie was fired, it was a huge blow to the team. Most swimmers would have ever thought that when Neil offered vacation, he would never come back. They were shocked and devastated, but we all did. The only way to get through it was to stick together as a team and rely on each other. Before Neil was fired, in most of our swimmers' minds, we had the dream team. Neil just hired Bob Miller, who's an amazing coach to coach the whole team. Our team was as strong as ever, and we knew we were going to have a great season. After Neil was gone, we didn't know what to do, and we all wondered if our team would ever be the same again. Some kids on the team had been coached by Neil for already eight years, and the Neil coaches found it was all together, remember? In December, Steve Butcher became the inner coach. Steve was okay for us, he allowed us to do pretty much whatever he wanted, and he never told us to swim if we were disdaining it. You could stand around, take a 30-minute bathroom break, or have a conversation with him during practice that didn't even apply to swimming in any care. In the three months that Steve was here, I got feedback three times. Because of this situation, 10 N-WAC swimmers, 10 N-WAC junior senior swimmers, liked to participate in high school sports. Almost none of them wanted to come when Neil was here. When both of our team captains left to join the high school track teams, we had to sign a new person to lead dry ice, because it was totally outrageous concept for a country to lead dry ice. Let me just say, Brett Bott, Hannah Schreier, and Bob and Morgan Spinnall led dry ice throughout those three months. They were our coaches for about half an hour for about 75 practices. But they were the ones, clearly weren't the ones getting paid. It was Steve who was getting the money for penny dollars, for talking to Bill Walker, for staring off into space, and it was Steve who was getting paid for the work being done by our teammates. After three months, I was happy to end sadly Steve's deal. Things had not been great, but everyone felt badly for it for the situation he had been put into. About half, a month and a half ago, Bill Patterson came. He was our new coach, and all of us had been waiting for this thing for five months. Let me tell you, he has not lived up to my expectations. Things started off, and I was not satisfied. My mother said, "You have to give him a chance." It's been a month and a half, and I have given him a chance, and I am not happy. Bill is not engaged. He is lazy, and he is not an expert in dry ice, because of Neil's. One thing Neil taught us is how to use the clock. We are all very good at using it, and Bill loves that. Though, as this clock watches us into call of times, when we have four perfectly good clocks that we know how to use and get our time done. He makes us remember, as we may tend to have times during tests, that we should easily put the stopwatch away and let scare our own types and our own depth. I literally think if Bill spent as much time giving feedback and coaching as he does, looking and playing around with his stopwatch phone, or talking to Colleen, he'll be with him for some days. One thing I know for sure, if things cannot change, and if they do not change soon, I will not continue with them. I've invested seven years of my life in N-WAC, and it all should be ripped away for our team, and I want a part in six months, so it's a matter of time. I think the only good that has come out of this is that I learned that I need to want it for myself. When Neil was here, I wanted so badly to do it for him, because I wanted the satisfaction of him telling me to jump or giving me a knuckle bump. If I continue to swim, it's because I want it for myself, and I want to be there to support my teammates. It's not because I support Bill, and it's not because I support Hannah and Karen. This team has been ripped apart, and you are the blame. A team that was once strong and inviting place to beat is now a box of hazel.
Okay, Molly, if you want to sign the roster, we have public comment again at the end when we finish our business. You're welcome to do that and finish your letter. Thank you. Lauren Bott?
In November of 2012, all I know for the past seven years of my life was dramatically changed, all in an instant. My swim coach Neil Ronnie, loved by both parents and family alike, was fired for reasons I do not understand. But what I do understand is this: Bill Walker has destroyed one of the most important things in many of the lives of many young athletes in this community, and we are all worse off because of it. When Coach Neil was fired, I was devastated. Never in my wildest dreams did I imagine that this could happen, because Neil was the definition of great coach. He poured countless hours of extra time into doing things that are not required of a coach. He would stay late to answer times for goal sets, or do knee entries, or come up with new ways to improve in and out of the water. And he couldn't do it because he was getting paid extra to do it. He didn't do it because he had to. He did it because he loves his sport, he loves his team, and he loved us. Neil always pushed us in and out of the water, and there is not a doubt in my mind that if he came to one of Neil Ronnie and our practices, he would be trying to edit it. But what is even more important than the physical benefits of swimming under Neil are the life skills that he taught us. He taught us the importance of communication, time management, holding yourself accountable, being honest with yourself, how to work with others, a list of things I've learned endlessly. I know for a fact that I am a better person for having Neil as my coach than I ever would have been without him. Since Neil has been gone, I swim under a number of coaches. I use the term "coaches recently," because they've not been coaches they've been there as. I swim under three different coaches to be exact, not including the substitute coaches that you have quite often. But they might have all, they might as well have all been the same coach, because the lack of engagement has been the same. For example, Neil requires swimmers to be in the water at 2:44 and 59 seconds, or you are considered late and have to do burpees. Some swimmers may not like this, but guess what? A few sets of burpees later, and suddenly everyone is in on time. Now, people literally come to practice and get in with a piece. That isn't teaching you anything about life or career work. I, along with other swimmers, pray that our new team, things do not change. I hope you know that the decisions that have been made in the past six months have wrecked the life of many in this community, and there's no one to blame but yourselves. What was once a wonderful program, the pride of the Northwoodview Park Recreation District, is now a definitely thing that no one is happy to be a part of. The pride I was tied to on myself and N-WAC is gone, and it's been a place of feeling of shame that I live through to these people that brought on these teams in my life. It is disappointing to me that adults, people actually able to look up to, have made such poor decisions. It is time for you to do what Neil has taught us to do, accept responsibility. Forget about running a lawsuit and do the right thing. Give Neil back before it's too late. And I know it will require that this fall, you fight, and it will probably make you feel messy, but it's the right thing to do, and it's about time you did the right thing.
Thank you. Autumn Robinson?
I've been frustrated for a long time. We've all heard of NY's return to the recreational team. Many of it is just frustrating at this point, because I, the senior class, senior class, getting ready to graduate, have been very disappointed with the senior team. The seniors, including myself, are not looking forward to the upcoming swimming. We have all, oh, we all have our own personal goals. I'm going to achieve, want to achieve swimming scholarships, I was wanting to achieve national top six and other prestigious. Regarding some of the goals, we know that it's our success which we get, hasn't, sorry. I feel as though our success is here in the water, no longer for, for using hard work to lead it to you, Gady, and those who finally let a prepared coach to evaluate our home with it. Chris Patterson wants to seem to place more value in the bathroom. We are expected to finally stand around and talk. There is little valuable feedback. We wish to question more of communication, give it to the best means in the success of our team. Chris Patterson wants to ignore the value lessons he learned from our former coach Neil Ronnie. Coach Neil told us we should never leave the wall without knowing why. Good passion, but Chris Patterson just wants us to leave the wall, get on in the next set, so we can get out of the water. Not only is there little encouragement, and they're currently on exceptionally collegiate levels. Swimming is just like any other sport. Football players are violently going up and down the field, just throwing and catching the football. They have to think about it. We are, swimming is just the same thing. We have to think about our hand taste, where the propulsion is in the stroke. And we've been taught a work ethic to include knowing the progress for every set, and what we knew, and you have to be that concentrated. I try not to compare Chris Patterson and Neil, but it's difficult to avoid. Running quick is not pushing. We are expected to be better practices than the coaches in our team. I have learned more from being on N-WAC, things that I can use my own way, all in trying to be a child, being successfully successful adult. I have learned time management, like the swimming pool schools, my time with families, and new education I learned. I have learned how to lead a troop by reinforcing factor. I didn't blame, but I've learned it takes a strong, successful leader to lead a strong, successful team. I've also learned that there's more in life than yourself. No one is going to be successful in life if everyone thinks about themselves. So, I am learning that as a teenager, and it's adding to my everyday life. You, as adults, should definitely be able to realize that.
Thank you. Angela Johnson?
I have Michelle Robinson's letter, although she is not able to be here today. November 2012, William Walker made a promise to the NY team and parents. That promise was to locate a new head coach who guaranteed no changes to the team. Unfortunately, he did not keep his promise, and everything has changed. His change was not for the better, but for the worse. Her view provided with a temporary approach. The truth is, we are provided with a babysitter. This coach spent the majority of our practice time in the director's office instead of coaching. A practice that was ready for us on the board, and we were expected to discover the set without any monitoring, monitoring, feedback, or coaching. On several occasions, a left arm was put in place to equip our team, so we were forced again to certainly spin the set, bring it on the board, and nobody back or monitor it. Practice was nothing more than a board sunrise laps. We could step together as a team through the rock patch, in hopes that the next coach would bring something worth containing. After wearing three months for a new head coach, we attended the team meetings to greet Bill Patterson. Everyone was provided with a white t-shirt and the suggestion that we all start a little bit of previous training. Next week, we should have been able to go together as a team and look forward to the future. Instead, head coach Bill Patterson was shown us he has no real interest in the success of N-WAC. During practice, he is uninterested and would much rather use his cell phone. Travis called in about things that are completely irrelevant to coaching, force it and wipe our share, addressing us swimmers or lead ones who suit him. When asked six months of purpose for specific aspects of the set, whether it be the technical focus of a stroke, or what training parameters we should be monitoring, he either gives us an invasive answer, is an aerobic set, or a house and attitude, telling us we need to just get in water and swim. Andrew's mind was swimming, and went takes a don't ask questions attitude. Outside of water, he says whatever sounds good, and doesn't back up his play with any action. I would like his all talk and nothing to show for it, or what many would call a contempt. Those workouts have been focused mostly on one or a pre-set. There are three other strokes using practice early. We would work out their design for us to improve on all strokes, but we would be unable to compete on any level. As we, as a team, feel that this training lacks many aspects that are necessary for our success. The Masters team shares our frustration, and they're dissatisfied with their training as well. The gold team is supposed to be designed to prepare swimmers for the junior team. They need a coach that will provide them with constructive practices on technique, encouragement, and the training they need to improve, not constant yelling or lack of useful feedback. I have not talked to one person happy being on the gold team. A good coach would simply out, scare off into space, or spend their coaching time chatting with friends. A good coach would be engaged, and willing to do whatever it takes to keep the team moving in the right direction. The gold team is a coach that has not only invested in them, but invested in N-WAC as a part.
Okay, your time is up, but whose letter was that, that you said that was?
Michelle Robinson.
Okay. If you guys want to leave those letters with us, we can make copies so that we can all read it, or you can sign the letter, or the public comment form again, and when we have public comment at the end of the meeting, we can hear the rest of the letter if you'd like. Either way, it's fine. Thank you. Thanks for sharing that.
Did I hear you say the Masters team in there?
Yes, sir.
What information did you get from the Masters team?
I don't know. I'm not the one who wrote the letters, sir, but she did say that the Masters team shares the frustrations that we have as well, about our training in our practices.
Okay. I'm on the Masters team.
Thank you. Carolyn?
Girl, if you could mark where you were on your, on your letter, and continue on the next public comment, because I would love to hear the rest of what you have to say. If you could, just put a pin mark by it, and sign this here in a minute, and at the end of the meeting, we'll have public comment again, and you can continue. Please.
After all the public comments I've done, I'm sure my personality has fallen.
That's what you're supposed to be doing.
That's what they're supposed to do. Public comment. Yep, she's asking. Yeah, sure.
Come and sign this, kid.
Absolutely.
Sign it now.
Sign it.
Yeah. Put your name on here. Yep, it's for the show. There you go.
Just put the show on back.
So, I've got to change this here.
Thank you.
Home, by the way.
Thank you.
Well, I haven't had a significant amount of time to read your response. I do appreciate that you gave it back to us in writing, so that we can thoroughly review that. To say I'm disappointed would be completely discharacterizing how I feel, but the severity and the significance of the charges that were brought to you. And you've gone through and minimized and couched, and then said, you know, well, it happened once, or it was new, or it was busy, or we were new commissioners, which isn't actually accurate, because not all of you are new commissioners. Permitting this pattern of behavior, which is the crux of the issue with Mr. Walker, is not developmental. If someone does not have a moral compass and does not follow state and federal laws, they cannot be taught to do that. And yet, your choosing to permit him to still provide the leadership of this park district, and potentially put the future of this, of this park district for the, for the entire community, will, will be gone.
Why didn't you run?
Pardon?
Why didn't you run any actions?
You know, Alan, I don't think that I'm here to challenge. I'm here to state my opinion, just like you're here to sit at your side of the table and state yours. So, at this juncture, and I'm going to sign up again, because I'll think of something more to say, but I am. We'll, we'll go ahead and take other action on behalf of the community, and that will shine a very dark light on what you've done, and unfortunately, it's going to shine that light on our pool and our park district, and the, and the actions of the commissioners. But we'll take those steps as we need to.
Thank you. Lynn Bott?
I'm going to go ahead and read a letter that I've written, which, in light of your report, is perhaps not necessary, however, I just want to echo Karen's, Carolyn's thoughts there, to say we're disappointed, and I'm disappointed would be a grave understatement. And walking near the shadows in a district where you're supposed to serve the public and be a representative to you is, is really, really disappointing. The day that Neil was terminated, tears of anger, disbelief, and loss poured from the souls of many N-WAC swimmers. A reckless board opened the door for an agenda-driven, competent, and deceitful director to rip an anchor from their lives. That day, they began a painful journey through some of life's difficult lessons. Since that time, you have heard much about the tremendous value that we as parents place on the lessons that Neil imparted to our children, enduring lessons of character, strength, perseverance, personal responsibility of discipline, and becoming your best self. You heard us mourn the loss of the important teaching that we can look past our concerns that the bias that caused you to so anxiously dispense of this vital force in their lives virtually guaranteed that those values would not be part of N-WAC's future. In the meantime, our children demonstrated the character that had been instilled in them by their training. They stepped up, worked together, persevered, and stayed the course. They had been trained to have goals, to be purposeful in their actions, and to connect their present efforts with their future opportunities. Their character stood in stark contrast to the shameful conduct of their adult leaders. They looked forward with hope to the day a new coach would come. They were excited to once again have a bunch who cared about them, who was vested in them and would restore our culture of success. Sadly, that hope was given away to an overwhelming sense of hostility. There are perhaps, there are some, perhaps some of you, who think our kids should just get over it. Life is hard, and they should just deal with it. It is true that there are lessons for our children in this experience. They have learned that leaders will fail you, that people lie, deceive, distort, and shrink in the face of doom if they are sufficiently motivated by self-interest, cowardice, misplaced loyalty, vengeance, or even simple mean-spiritedness. They have learned that justice does not always prevail. They have learned the strength of characters at short supply, and when all good options are removed, you may have to abandon your goals and redirect your focus. Our children have been compelled to learn these lessons. Those lessons are not without some value, but they were never the goal of our children's participation in N-WAC. We did not invest time, money, and effort, so our children couldn't learn the lessons of failed leadership. The lessons they've taken from this experience are embedded on their hearts and minds, and do not need to be taught more than once. They are hard truths that once you have the misfortune to learn, you never forget. They are not lessons that will make them their best selves, only lessons that will put them for the grave hardships brought on by human failure. About a month ago, several N-WAC swimmers went together again as they attended the funeral of one of their former teammates.
Lynn, it's been two minutes. I'm sorry. Could you cut it off now, and then we can, we have to get through the business parts, and you can definitely.
This is the district's business.
Oh, it is? We have to get through everybody?
Yep.
So, and I have to hear everybody, not just one person, so I'm trying to be fair here. Trying to be fair?
Lynn, turn that line.
Okay.
About a month ago, several N-WAC swimmers went together again as they attended the funeral of one of their former teammates. As the many guests in that service shared their thoughts of condolence, the grieving father anxiously accepted their words, but there was only one person with whom he actually took time to talk. That person was Neil, "coach," as he called him. The connections of their spirits have been forged by Neil's meaningful investment in that young man's life. Neil cared about him, and his dad knew it. Neil did and does care about all our kids, and for all their days, he will be coach. The hour for restoration is drawn to a close. If you do not act quickly, it will be too late. We all know that there are practical realities that must be addressed, and when those practical matters are processed through the understanding of the absolute failure of duty and misconduct of leadership that has now come to light, whether it has been acknowledged or not, there can be little doubt that what has been accepted as fact is fantasy. Neil was not terminated for insubordination or any other illusion or misconduct. He was terminated because of evil motives and an abuse of power. The NWPRD board has failed its district and lost the respect of the very public it has to serve. It has not ensured ethical conduct of leadership. The board has walked our children through a valley, valley of life's darkest lessons. You, a board with new members... You, a board with new members, have an opportunity to demonstrate greater wisdom and greater vision. You have the opportunity to teach our children more purposeful and valuable lessons by showing them what it means to be humble, courageous, and wise. You can show them how to do what is right, even when it's hard. You can restore in them some hope, hope for their team, hope for their futures, and hope for the strength and integrity of your leadership.
Cindy Hopper?
So I would like to make comment on how Mr. Walker obtained the NWA check account. He obtained it through a letter from the previous chairman of the board. And I want to know what kind of action is going to be upon that, because the chairman acted on his own. And Mr. Boch wrote a letter to the bank, and there's only one person's signature on that account. And it's Mr., it's Mr. Walker's. And when you're in a public, public community, there's supposed to be two signatures on it. There's nobody else looking at that account. It's not on vouchers. There are public records requests, and that bank account has six hundred and ninety, six thousand, sixteen thousand nine hundred dollars, and now it's nine thousand dollars. So I'd like to know what seven thousand dollars are. And I would like to know who else is overseeing that account. And I'd like to know how the board allowed someone to get access to an account without board approval.
This is slightly different.
And it was started on October, and that was before Neil was terminated. It was started October twenty-eighth that Mr. Walker got access to that account. And I would like to know why that was necessary. I feel it was still there. It was on October twenty-ninth that Mr. Boch wrote the letter. I've determined the board. There's nothing discussed in the public meeting. There's nothing discussed that he would all be a permission to do that.
I actually.
Here's the letter she's referring to. And I'll share it with you guys so you can see it.
I emailed it to both of them.
Okay, well, you didn't email it to me. What? Maybe you can read it.
Well, my concern is that Mr. Walker was out of line by having the chairman of the board write him a letter without board approval. And it's not Mr. Boch's job for getting employees to do that. And he chose to do that behind your back, and he has access to an account.
Don't do it behind your back. It's a very serious thing you're saying. There should be two signatures, and I hear what you're saying. If one could deal with it, with what's there, without imputing evil motives, it'd be really a lot easier to work with this stuff. We have to look into it.
I understand, but I'm just saying, I just, my problem is, is it seems like Mr. Walker did this with a kayak thing. You know, he did this four days last year. He doesn't.
I don't know anything about the kayak thing.
He had a, he tried to have his personal business be purchased by the district.
And the district said no.
And the district said no. He got a letter from an attorney, a personal letter from Dave Jamison requesting he not do that, suggesting he not do that.
And it was something that was discussed in the interviews before, so it was something that the board was aware of before he was hired. That was discussed previously before he was hired. That event, the kayak event, was actually already discussed.
So can you please disclose to us who was present for those interviews? Because Mr. Merrill, Commissioner Merrill says he was never present for that discussion.
I was not, because I wasn't a commissioner yet, but.
Well, I think, no, that's right. It didn't happen. It didn't happen during the total discussion. It'd be nice to know when that happens.
So.
So my concern is, my, my concern is, is this is consistent. And in May, he asked people to volunteer again, and that's inappropriate to ask people to volunteer. He wants people to volunteer at something that Northwood or Deception has. I mean, if he wants to put that out on a, on a board, but not put it in the newsletter requesting people to volunteer for something, I'm trying to say that consistently he's doing these things. And I feel like people just want to prioritize and move forward and not.
No, no, not, if you did not understand from reading the report.
I have not read the report or interviewed.
I know, I know, I understand that. I'm just saying that we did go through line by line. There was a lot of hours put into research in every single claim, whether it be looking at WAX, whether it be looking at RCWs, whether it be looking through the lawyer, having interviews. So we did take every bit of effort we could to investigate every single one and each validity. And none of them were, we didn't find anything that was illegal. There were some things that were done, like you're saying, there's, there's patterns that you can see. But what maybe the public doesn't understand is when Bill was hired, he was hired on here to make decisions. There was a juvenile board. There, there was a lot of changes, a lot of things that were going on, and it was a, it was a difficult time. And he, I'm sorry, I'm talking. And so he did come in here and make decisions, and he made those decisions. And now we're having to look and see if those decisions. And what you're saying is you don't like them, and what we have said as a board is we evaluate him as a director next month. And we appreciate your feedback. If you have more allegations against the legality of something he's done, I'm happy to look into that and investigate it.
I have a question though. Did you all ever talk to Neil or did you before any of this happened? That's the other question I wanted to know.
Before any what?
Before they got terminated. Did anybody?
Yes, I did.
You did? You talked to both of them?
Both of them. Yes, I did. An executive session.
I didn't know they were terminated. I wasn't here.
The executive session was terminated?
No, she was already terminated. When she was, when she was called in there, she was already terminated. Okay, next. But if you do have something you want me to investigate, I'm, I'm really happy to look into it for you.
Would you like, would you like me to give this letter to her?
I have to.
Julie Cramp?
All right. It's the gap. NWPRD is not thriving at all right now. The community is no longer confident in the district. NWA and the Masters swimmers, they created a very positive image, which equals community support through positive press releases. There was lots, there's all sorts of positive things in the press that the community would read to build up the community, to make this an outstanding place, which we don't get anymore. I would say that, you know, the income that's brought in through needs is, is substantial to our community. That hasn't happened. Needs get canceled. It, it, it makes our, our community not thrive like it should. The income and revenue, it's been lost. NWA and the Masters program, they're the ones who got that last lucky pass. They're the ones who were your bread and butter. I feel like if you would truly consider bringing Neil back, you really will create stability again and turn things around. It's a possibility. It's one that you should consider. You're on the brink of disaster, and you should be fighting for the life of the district. Neil still actually could be the key to stabilize what's left of this swim programs. He could be that tool that saves the district. Think about the program that you had before and the program that you have right now. The question is, do you want to thrive or do you want to die? Disaster is coming down. It's here. It's disastrous right now. Do you want future community support that's dependent on a strong thriving swim program? Or do you want to try to make a lonely go of it, all by yourself? I think you need to think about which is the better choice for the district. You're called to do that, and the choices that you've been making haven't, haven't helped this district thrive. It looks bad for the community. It looks bad for the board. It looks bad for you guys personally. I think that it is high time that you really decide to eat some humble pie and make some strong choices. I know it's tough, but you've got a community who's looking at you to make those tough choices. I encourage you to do that.
Thank you. I just want to say, I agree that we all have had to make very difficult decisions.
Pardon?
I agree that we all have had to make difficult decisions. At least, I know you guys are fairly newer, but we, it has been a difficult few months. And having to put a lot of emotion aside and having to hear, you know, a few people sit down here, and I see tears in these meetings. I see kids come out and I see their soul. And I've been through this with my kids, because Coach Katie was also let go from the district or parted ways for whatever reason. And so I know what that feels like. But as a board member, that is my duty, and that is what I've been doing. And it has been difficult, but I stand strong on the decision that we've made because we, this is the only decision we could have made, based on the facts and based on legal counsel. So, which is, I do hear you.
Always make a different decision.
Oh, yeah, if it was the right decision. But we have to stand on the right decision, valuing everything and not just emotion, not just.
Right, and I think that you would review and take a strong look at the results of your decisions. The consequences of your decisions have got to tell you that they were not good decisions. Otherwise, you wouldn't be thriving.
Yes, consequences are, unintended consequences also are not always the best thing, but.
Right, so that's your opportunity to, to look.
Right. So Angela, would you like to go ahead?
It's like, I can't condone this. You know what? It, it really, it really does come down to being respectful of one another. That's all that change ever happens. To make faces and do this towards her when she's speaking. You know, you know what? It's disrespectful, and that's all there was to it. It's the next person, Angela Johnson, public comment. It's your turn.
Well, I would like to say something about how she was saying about lucky, well, because of lucky past, the only reason that we're still here talking about the pool in general is because we stood there out in football fields during football games. We stood out in the parade. I don't remember what parade that was. It was like the Fourth of July parade. We all went to go and stand for this pool. And now we're standing here and trying to talk about what we're going to do about all of this. As far as I can see, Neil has done more for this community than anyone else, as far as I can see. I am a Navy rat that has moved around so many different places. I've seen so many different things and so many different kinds of people. I'm now going to go into the coast guard family, most likely because of Neil. I didn't have the best grades. You know, I don't have the best leadership as far as most people saw. But he could see more things in us than anybody else could. And the reason, you know, why I probably get disgusted even at the Navy side is because he pushed us so hard to be all that we could be. You know, and we're more, this is more than just a team. This is more of like a family. He was more of like a friend and a family member to us, which is why we're fighting so hard to bring him back. You know, you've hurt so many more people than you think you have. You've hurt people that moved away from here. There are people that were on this team before that were finding out that Neil was fired. But I cried when I heard that happen. I was all the way down there. You know, I've known that some people in Maryland have cried about it too, that are hurt from it. And they're just, you know, the family are very upset about it. They don't, they want to be able to come back here and swim with Neil, and now they can't do that. And then putting all of these different kind of fees and stuff like that for us to come back. Because I'd rather not swim here at all. I'm going to put in the waters. You know, it's just, you're taking away a lot more than you think you are. You know, he taught us a lot about different life skills and leadership on hard work and what we can do for ourselves, which was, you see these kids pushed so far to stand together as hard as they had, and they have enough. They've had enough. It's not fair to what, it's not fair what you guys are doing to them and to pretty much the whole community. You're killing them.
Thank you.
And I'm pretty sure you can see that as far.
Thank you for sharing. Okay, public comment's over. If anyone has anything to.
Do you have a public comment?
You can come, but at this point, you'll have to go on to the next public comment. Yep, but you can sign it. Thanks. Okay, minutes approval.
Minutes, they be approved. Minutes thirteen, April twenty-thirteen. She approved.
I have a motion to approve the minutes. So a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Approved. Voucher review. Do you want the chance to redue the vouchers? If there's anyone here to answer questions.
I am out, sir.
I move that district vouchers five, seven, eight, eight, five, eight, two, two, in the amount of two thousand three hundred and fifty, no, in the amount of thirty-three thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty cents, and the payroll transfers from the Emerald account to a payroll account of forty-six thousand nine forty-eight point forty-nine be approved. A second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Staff reports?
Please read giving a staff report.
Is Coach Bill, are you going to give a report at all on the staff report? Is there anyone here that's going to?
It's going to be a little hard to hear.
That's okay. Are you going to give a report at all? Would you like to?
One minute's way out.
Three.
Now you got to take your time.
Do it again.
Take your time.
Buzz, kind of quickly going through a credit report that had won because of two primary reasons, scheduling challenges and what I feel would require valid transitional impacts. It can quite be, it can kind of interest the visiting teams and therefore make the decision to, to cancel it. Problem solving report in next season, two thousand fourteen. Committed to create buzz within TNS. There seem to be more buzz at all for that meet. That's necessary. Two changes I propose, changing from a three-day to a two-day format and push it one week early. That way, it won't be in conflict with the opening long course meet of the season, which happened with Courage just a week away from that down in Federal Way, and had over nine hundred swimmers in that. That was a considerable impact on potential attendees. May Flowers meet. I have some old group attending there. Swimmers achieved eighty-five percent. Best non-championship times. I thought that was a solid bit of racing. White Country coming up. We have about twenty-eight kids signed up. And entries are being tracked up, detailed, changes in detail being made as we speak. And we're looking forward to a good competition. My proposal in the, in my report to address the proposed idea of a high school group. I'll elaborate that on that. The thing I want to emphasize is that, two things. Number one is that in creating this group, I see this as an opportunity for high school athletes to train up. On the flip side, I do not see this as an opportunity for NWA swimmers to train down. I emphasize it. The business plan we got put together makes it a self-sustaining model using existing staff. Pays per self, using appropriate user water time currently is available. We want to train attendance electronically on a regular basis. And the success of the program is ultimately maybe measured on a couple of things. Attendance and the better success of the users. There are two ways to, a couple of ways to grow a club. Number one is through lesson programs. And I use that as a model to refer to the April Fools event that we conducted with about a hundred new kids coming into the pool. The idea is to expand that lesson program, the participation in that, and hopefully build NWA through that lesson program. It's the pipeline. Another way of doing, growing a club is through promoting and encouraging high school swimmers who are already a part of the sport to expand their experience. And that's the focus, the thought on this business plan, which I believe will benefit the club in the long run. Want to touch on some very positive results that we had this last weekend at the Thunderbird meet. We had about twenty, thirty-plus kids attending there. Came up with ninety-five percent personal guests. We had five new team records. We had very close two more, two other swims who were close to team records. We had very close two more, two other swims who were close to team records. We had one individual making her first u-stroke cut, another individual who were making her first a-sexual cuts ever. We had three high point winners, Sharon James Concepcion, Calypso, Tunde, and Ashley Merrill. And so that was an outstanding effort that I commend to them. That's my report.
I've got a couple of questions coming in. On the report, before we get to the, the high school swim group, I got a letter from the resident of the district last night. And it had to do, and some of this isn't on you necessarily, it's, well, it is and it's on Bill. And it had to do with the website. One of the things had to do with the locker fees in here. When, when NY kids join NY, they're given the option to rent a locker. And I'm bringing this up so maybe you, if you get a chance to talk to Bill before a weekend. It was $25 when they joined NY. They can get a locker. They have that locker for basically as long as they want to swim. And what my understanding is, in the 90s, the NY Booster Club bought those lockers. And now, in February, I guess, it shows up on the website as a $25 annual fee. And, you know, that's, that's concerning to me because, you know, that's, that's not what people were told. And if you're told something, you gotta stick by that. And that's, you know, I, I thought that that was a very valuable point that this person had brought up. And on that same, and where it is, if you want to see it on the website, it's actually on the building character to be competitive swimming. There's one other thing on there that just kind of showed up. We've always been, the kids have always been required to wear swim caps, Coach. You know, with NY on it, the, the gold with the blue letter. And there was a, a team suit available that they could buy, but it wasn't required that they wear that team suit. And now on the website, it says that they're actually required to, to wear that suit. And, you know, and part of the concern there would be low-income families, or if they don't have the money to buy that suit. And then at the high end, with the kids who are very competitive, a high-level swimmer, that those parents are concerned that the quality of those suits isn't, I guess, conducive to them, you know, performing at that higher level. And I'm just bringing it up because I thought that those were two legitimate concerns that this person had, and I don't know why they just showed up. And in addition to that, the code of conduct has disappeared off of the website, and I'm not sure about that either, Coach. We all signed a code of conduct about two years ago, something like that. I think it was about two years ago. And for the most part, I mean, I think that we all agree that it, it wasn't a bad thing. It, it was actually probably a good thing. And, and I think you would have mentioned also having a code of conduct. And one of the things in that code of conduct that got brought up two months ago had to do with, forgive me, a lack of better words, but kind of a chain of events that happens if a, if a kid were to get in trouble. Or to be just, you know, a disciplinary process, if you will. So, you know, and I looked that up two months ago and it was on the website. Because I printed it out, I brought it in here, and, and when a few of the kids got suspended for a day or two. But it's not there now, and I'm not sure why. I don't know if you guys are looking to redo it, maybe that's what it is, but if you can, some parents are really concerned with that. Why it just is not there anymore. And that were, that was the concerns of a, of a resident of our district that I wanted to bring forward. And the last thing, on the high school swim, swim group. I think you had one, I want to make sure this is typed. It talks about $48 a month during the months they participate. This charge is equivalent to the existing NY gold, that would be bronze, the bronze group. And the only other thing, and I'm concerned with, and I know others are because they've expressed that to me, is down under the measures of success. First of all, I think it's a great idea, and I, I love what you're going to do, but the number of athletes who wish to advance into upper levels of NY. I'm really concerned that you have a high school kid that is on the swim group and, you know, they swim for, sorry, they swim for three or four months and they think, I'm ready to move up to junior, senior. And they're not. And how, how will you address that? And how is that fair to a kid that maybe has been stuck in that silver, gold, striving and doing the best they can? And at the same time, if those kids are moved into that group, does it impact the quality of time, the juniors and seniors, you know, that they're there? I don't know if that makes sense.
It does make sense.
Okay, okay, okay. Yes, please.
Okay. As far as lockers, I'm not really familiar with.
I'm sorry to ask.
So I'm not as made aware of any, anything as far as the lockers or any changes or anything like that. So I can't answer that. What I do know is that I try to get personal water myself and it's, they're, they're used up. So as far as the suits, I appreciate the confidence and the quality goes. Swim 2000 has historically been a source for providing apparel to the club. We have been in contact with Swim 2000. And as a matter of fact, Monday I planned to, including our conversation on what the difference was, talk about team apparel and, and suits. So it's a good point to understand that there is some concerns about the quality of that. So quality of those suits and what's on the product that is shown on the website, perhaps some breakdown there. So I definitely will look into that.
Okay.
As far as the code of conduct, I'm not aware of any thing that has, you know, anybody that has taken it off the website. I certainly didn't. So if it was and it's not apparently there, then certainly should be on there. I am aware of the printed out copies of everybody to sign that. I went through that recently for a reason. So, yeah, I am fully supportive of the, of the value of, of the code of conduct. As far as the high school group, concerned about advancing from that group into juniors and seniors, I think the process is that you, as I typically do when we transition from one thing to another, is, is really define a transition phase, okay? If someone shows ability and interest, what I would do is define a transition phase whereby that individual, if it is appropriate, okay, then they have the opportunity to transition into that group on a limited basis, say a couple times a week. It's a test case to see if it works. If somebody isn't qualified to be there, then I'm going to tell them that they need more time, you know, elsewhere, you know, but not at the expense of the junior or senior group. So if at the end of the day, just have them make a appropriate decision for a child, that's right. That's my strategy.
Thank you. Do you know who is?
Rest of your question?
It did, sir.
Who is doing the editing to the website right now?
I'm sorry?
Do you know who is editing the website right now?
Who is editing?
Here on staff? Is there one person in charge?
Um, I don't know the total list of administrators. Obviously, we have, you know, financial and administrative assistants, a director access, my access. Our, our coaches all have access to the website as well. And that would be for correspondence or, or answers.
Okay, thank you.
I would recommend that on that website, you put your, your little file, file on there because, you know, okay, so people know you are.
It's, it's one of our projects, is a follow-up for our photo session. We got everything. Got the photographs of all the coaches. Put that in there. When I'm meeting this Monday or Saturday with my coaches, that's one of our items, is to bring our updated files and make that available to them.
And I apologize, I know Bill Walker's not here right now. Do you happen to know if we went with one or the other for the new website development? Are you guys moving into the new?
I believe we did, yes.
Okay, well, that should solve all these problems too now.
Steve, your question about the suit being required though.
Yeah, that is a good point. Are you requiring this?
I don't think I address it appropriately.
Thank you.
I, I think, I think it's important to recognize where families are. We want to look like we are, we are continuity in our apparel. That's important. If somebody has a better alternative that is the same, you know, color, then I'm not going to discourage them if that's something that they, works better for their family. So, so I think the idea of a requirement is that what we wanted, we want a cheap visual issue. That's, that's the focus. If somebody has a cheaper alternative or less expensive alternative, then there's no reason why they should be discouraged.
So we're not going to, just want to clarify this, Coach. We're not going to tell a kid that shows up with a black and green bathing suit that they can't swim in, and I'm afraid.
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, we, we'll talk to Bill Walker about having that removed from the website because it's misleading and we don't want people to think they're breaking rules because I'm a rule follower and if it says that, I would, I would buy it. So, I mean, I do understand what you're saying about team unity and looking like a team. I get that. I really, I really do get that. I match, I match underwear. I just want you to know I'm that kind of guy. But there we go, there you go. Touch my feeling itself. But anyway, if you're a low-income family, it, it's like, you know, I, I don't think we can expect a family to do that. And this is the Park District. And thank you very much. Thank you, Bill.
Okay.
The high school coach thinks that there's a 10-minute overlap with the gold coach, and I'm wondering why the gold team doesn't need their coach for 10 minutes.
I did read that as well. Did you see that? Yes?
I saw it, but I don't think that's something I can answer because that's not what we're doing.
Did you hear that, Coach? There is a 10-minute overlap brought up. Okay. Could you please explain that?
Well, we looked at the timing and with the present timing from that squad and, you know, I mean, I would look in this and the strategy, you have one hour's worth of training for the high school group. Felt that that 10-hour overlap was managed to come in there. It's the beginning of one practice and the end of another. And we're going to look very carefully at that 10 minutes to make sure that as we move forward, that we have clear expectations on what is being done for the incoming group and what's being done for the upcoming group. So I think that's reasonable to manage that if that is, you know, there are a lot of different ways to do that, you have this, that, but I believe it's manageable. And I would put it in there if I didn't, number one, recognize that it's something, it's a small matter that we have to look into further to, to complete the idea. And then secondly, that it would be questioned or asked about. So I'm impressed.
Are you still in the planning phases of this? Are you looking for an action from the board tonight on this?
We're looking at action from the board.
Tonight, on this plan? Okay. On this plan, he's looking for action.
Can I ask one more question about this? So this 10 minutes, so we're talking at the end of the high school swim group practice in the pool, because they don't have dryland here. And at the same time, outside, the gold practice group is going to be doing dryland. We're not going to leave young kids out there without a coach.
Yeah, absolutely not.
Okay, so how would they overlap then?
Well, it's, it's a fair question. I think there are a couple of different options. One would be to have the incoming gold squad begin dryland on pool deck, okay? While the high school group is holding down their one-hour ride.
You're talking about stretching?
Yeah, stretching, yeah. Getting ready for dryland, starting initial dryland. There are a lot of different options. That group sitting there on the end of the pool and if you're doing this, they're doing, leg exercises, stretching, doing a lot of different varieties of dryland.
Please, please don't take this disrespectfully. Okay, I've listened to some people's concerns about, about the gold practice group coach. And do you think that she is ready and equipped to be able to, because it sounds like sometimes with her, and I don't know this, I'm just expressing what I, you know, so I don't want to be like he said, she said, but it's a concern that people have, and if I'm going to represent people, then I have to take it serious what they're, they're, they're bringing to me. And, and that would be that she doesn't manage her time well, possibly. That's how it's perceived by people anyway. And, and I don't know this, but it seems like to me that if there is a, if that concern is legitimate, and, I mean, and it's, it's true, then it would just complicate matters for her to be able to, to spread herself between those two. And I'm very concerned with that. I mean, especially if the perception is, you know, by parents, that, you know, they're being short-changed. Then it just further, I mean, I, I love the idea of truthfully, but I'm concerned that it would, I think, just, you know, reinforce people's feelings of their kid getting short-changed when you talk about this 10-minute overlap.
Then, you know, I, I listened to the feedback and I guess the, as a, you know, response to that, then perhaps the most appropriate choice would be to look at the training time for that high school group as being paired up so that there is no 10 minutes. And, you know, I think there would be a minor adjustment then to the fee based on it. And let to kind of table this idea until, you know, next commission meeting. Right now, they more, you know, a slight amendment to that, showing a 45-minute shot.
Okay.
I move this to be tabled until June, and we can look at the details if folks need to.
Are we going to discuss the returning alumni group information tonight? Are you going to table that till next meeting as well?
The idea is pretty clearly presented, plenty of coverage, there's a bunch of things that will be addressed. But I see that the idea is brought forward and I don't see, foresee any change.
Okay, thank you.
Have you talked to any of the students that would be coming back?
Sure.
Have you talked to any of the people that would be affected by this returning alumni group to see what the impacts are?
I got comments about their learning. I have one kid that's returning and trying to be, be with the team, help out with the team. And if you're charging like that, I'm, I'm telling her, just go out soon. You're active duty and stuff, you got ID, you're free. Because it doesn't make sense for me, especially if you're just staying like a week, not going swimming the whole month, and then charging enough that much. And personally, I will tell them, no, it's not. It doesn't make sense. Because my kids will help out even on the meet, help out the coach, not just, not just swimming with the, with the team and stuff. They help out everything, even with a little bit. So if it's charging like that, I'm sorry, it doesn't make sense.
No one else is coming back. The children will come back.
We're not coming back, so.
Maybe we can table it.
Yeah, we're talking about it.
Let's table it both till June and you can keep working on it and we'll see what's going on.
Yep, sounds good. Anybody from the running club here?
Well, we have about five of us are free sports.
We were supposed to hear a call from the run club.
Are you making a motion? Do you have to make a motion?
Just to table it, yes. And, yeah, I just, I'd get the move if it didn't work.
Then I would stick. A second before we table it both.
Until June.
No, well, real quick, I've already made the, we'll discuss it.
Well, we're open for, we're open for discussion.
The only problem is with the returning seniors, if we table it, I mean, kids are out of school now.
Are they out of school now?
Yes, they are. She's home.
They're starting to come.
She's home right now. And that's what I'm saying, I mean, it's.
No one asks.
And that's okay.
What do you see as the population potentially, Bill, or what do you see as the potential population, the number of people that might be coming into this returning high school group? Have you got any idea or are you just sort of trying to work it out?
I'm just trying, you know, determined by reaching out to them, obviously, coming through the end of the year. I don't think we're talking dozens. I would imagine we're talking smaller than that.
Well, I think we should wait until we have more people there.
Okay.
A mess.
That's right.
So we table that, talk to you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Then we go to employee of the month.
Well, no one's here to present that. Is it anyone?
Thank you, Coach Bill.
Okay. And the running club report, I guess, is not going to be given tonight. Aquatics, aerobics. And we do have employee of the month, but there's no one here to present. But, I'll just mention Curtis and I'll read what it says here. Curtis has been doing it all for months now. As an outgoing energetic aerobic instructor, most requested swim instructor, and tireless running club coach, Curtis has reached out to be a part of so many of our patrons' lives. As if that wasn't enough, in the past few months, Curtis helped develop a community marketing plan for our Park District, took the lead on introducing our new aquatics mascot, drove our participation in Holland Happening, was his normal boisterous self at April's Tools Day, and continued to build new partnerships for local businesses and youth organizations. So, he's not here, but he can employ the month this month. Unfinished business. I don't see Megan or Curtis or anyone else from the run club. Well, there's Curtis, but I don't want to bring him in here and put him on the spot. So, let's table that. Can I get a motion to table that till next month?
A motion to table the running club plan till next month.
Oh, give me a second.
One second.
All in favor of tabling it? Aye. New business? Do you have new business?
No, I do not.
Do you have new business? Okay, discussion. Any final comments, questions from the commissioners to the public? We're about leaving from tonight. No? You get Alan?
Yeah, I'm good. I'm really sensitive and I know the crowd has got its agenda. But I hope you read the report and maybe if one stops talking a little bit aggressively, it makes it easier to respond other than having to answer charges, no, or whatever. On a broader front, I think that that, I think we go a lot more depth in terms of the response rather than, these are not legal evals, which is an absolutely categorical statement, but it leaves a lot of human life where we're going to do an evaluation next month and we take the other sides of the well-documented complaints in many ways into account. But, it seems that there's not that willingness to try and find a way that we can get together. Be a lot easier as a commissioner. I mean, you can have half my pay. It doesn't matter to me as a commissioner. You know, we do this and yet you sort of play the game of, well, we're free and we can complain and you have to take it. Well, yeah, well, it'd be nice if you ran, you know? I mean, then we could all try and figure this thing out together if it's a community. It's cathartic to shout at people, but if you can't do anything except listen to the shouts and respond to what you see as correct in yourself, then you're not going to get a lot of really discursive answers to your questions.
I'd like to mention one thing I forgot. I'd like to thank Molly, Emily, Autumn. Thanks for, I mean, I hope you finish your letters in a minute. And regardless of all of this right now, I think it's awesome that you guys are standing up and fighting for what you believe in. And I would encourage you, as you go on in your life, wherever that takes you, to always be, to always stand up for yourself and to stand up for what you believe and be a part of the process. I applaud you and I just encourage you as a dad, you know, I think it's, your dad would be very proud of you and your mom's too.
Okay. Okay, back to the public comment. Did we even ask how she get taken? Thank you. Did you sign it?
No, I signed it.
Okay. You might cut in line for all those girls. They might take you down. Be careful.
Where am I?
Right here. Sure.
Did everybody get an opportunity to sign?
Anybody else?
Michael?
Okay, you're ready? Go ahead.
Standing here listening to some of this tonight, it kind of disturbs me. I'm a member of the community here and EnWAC is not the only thing that Northwood Beach Park and Rec does. And you guys are attacking the board for destroying Northwood Beach Park and Rec, which is not acceptable in my eyes. That's very frustrating to me. I understand that you all might have parents with Northwood, that do EnWAC, but that's not the only thing that Northwood Beach Park and Rec does. So, for you to sit here and tell the board that they're destroying the program, it's very disheartening to me. That's pretty much all I have to say. You guys are attacking them personally and it's not professional on your part. These guys are here volunteering their time basically to help support you, your families, your kids, and the community. We are not all the people in the community. There's a larger voice than what's in this room. And you guys are making blanket statements for everybody in the community, which I don't think is fair. Okay? Just please take a look at that and know that because of EnWAC, you might want to work on that. Don't attack the whole program and don't necessarily attack them personally, okay? They're making the best decisions that they think are possible for them. And just please take a look at what you're saying as, it should be professional, not, especially when you have young adults here and you're attacking people personally. You guys are role models for these people. And I don't think that you would want somebody to talk in that tone in front of your kids. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anna Marie?
Yeah, I need to add two things. One is my daughter, Mrs. Rashgar, which everybody said about a month ago, so nice. I'm very appalled that $1,000 were spent on these. I want to know who picked these. They're nylon. She swims here twice a week. Already they're destroyed. Guess what? I just found out from her. They've ordered another one. So, now we've maybe spent over $2,000 on these things. I'm just really frustrated with, that's a waste of money in my opinion. And whoever ordered these should know nylon does not work. It does not last. I'm really like, $1,000? And now they're ruined and, but I guess they order more, so another $1,000 instead. Kind of sad about that.
Are those instruments instructors wear again or do you see?
Yeah, these are for all the lifeguards and instructors. They're, they're...
They were dark blue.
They were dark blue.
I can see the piece.
Can you see? Yeah, just around the neckline. And my daughter hasn't washed, honestly, this may be kind of gross, but she hasn't washed it. She rinses it and hangs it to dry, so that's how it's worn. And $1,000 was spent on them. Yes. I'm sorry. No, I lost my...
So, it was supposed to be tie-dyed. It was supposed to be dark blue?
It's dark blue.
Okay.
Like a...
I thought it was just supposed to be...
Color blue. It's not tie-dyed.
That should be brought up.
I don't know who orders, but just for future, that one does not last.
It's no good.
Yeah, it's no good. And in regards to the lockers, it was my understanding, I don't think Coach Bill has anything to do with that. It was Bill Walker's decision about the $1,000 to here. Yeah, maybe you said that. I walked out to find my daughter's freshers. Anyway. And I just, I just want a clarification. I haven't read through the report that you, you all did, but I want to understand, I guess, what is the purpose of the board policies? Because I thought some of the decisions that Mr. Walker had made was against what some of the board policies were. And why are they in place if he's, if it's okay that he's doing that? I'm guessing that what you all found is that it wasn't illegal for him to do those, but he did go against board policy with some of those things. Can you answer? I guess I...
I think if you read the conclusion, you'll see exactly where that process is. The letter in front, it's, the whole matter's not closed, but the legal charges are answered and we don't see grounds for a legal action.
Because it's not against the law to do some of the things he did.
It's not against the law. And as you know, you can do all sorts of things and not do things against the law and they may not be acceptable or they may, but that's another level.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Yeah, okay. I have one more thing. I can't remember anymore.
Anna Marie, I think, and what they said earlier, all that will be looked at in June.
The violation.
Has to be renewed in June.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood that. So, it's not, what the policies and procedures and things that are set up are not laws. They're things that help the district to operate. Correct?
Depends on whether bylaws or policies.
And the subcommittee was to evaluate these allegations and so it was stated as an allegation against a certain, and it would, it would call it out very organized in the spreadsheet per RCW or per labor and violation. So, that law part, we took very seriously because as a district, if someone's saying there's allegation against the district, against Bill Walker, we had to investigate that specific claim. And so, for that claim, we would say there was nothing illegal done. But what you're saying is right, that there was a couple of actions or reactions to certain things that happened here that maybe weren't as appropriate or weren't handled as maybe you thought they should be. Those kinds of judgment calls are what we will be evaluating at the board next month with Bill's evaluation. And that's judgment. His judgment.
One thing about EnWAC, the gentleman who said that we are attacking you, I'm sorry if you guys feel attacked. EnWAC, EnWAC is the heart of NWPRD in my opinion because I see most of the EnWAC swimmers become the high school swimmers. They become the lifeguards here. They become the swim coaches or instructors, that kind of thing. So, EnWAC is very vital to how this, this district operates. And from what I've seen with, with swim lessons, the thing, swim attendance even is down from what I see. I don't know how true that is. I haven't actually seen the numbers. But, EnWAC plays a big role in all the other things that happen here at the Park District. And if you are being attacked, that is wrong. I agree with that. But EnWAC is a vital point of this district, I think.
Thank you. Carolyn?
I'm sorry, Ms. Page. Curtis and Megan are in and I don't know, I mean, should we let them get their report?
Just tell them congratulations on whatever.
No, no, he's part of the run club. Would you guys have a report for us tonight? Did you guys have the report for us for the run club?
You want each, each of the report inside the week, the monthly report?
No, we had tabled from last month, the, having the...
You want print report on how we're doing the presentation?
That's what I'm asking. Are you going to do that tonight?
Yeah, that's what we're here for. If you're here, you want to table it till next board meeting.
Yeah, we moved on. We, we, it was, yeah, but...
Let's go to June.
We had, we made a motion to table it till next month. Is that okay? I'm sorry. We didn't know that you guys were going to... But congratulations on employee of the month. Good job. Good job. Good job. We have you. Thank you very much. I know you did a great job. I know you did a great job for the community. It has to be signed. No, I'm sorry. But you can hug your, you can hug your prize. There you go. Thank you.
See you, Megan.
Okay, sorry.
So, in reviewing some of the findings in this, one of the items that was interesting, Lori, what you're saying about in response to Anna Marie's question, that irrespective of whether it was, it could be in accord with law, deemed to be a legal violation, that it is, you know, potentially maybe violated policies of the district and that that would be addressed subsequently or you're going to have this evaluation or whatever your process might be. And it's interesting to me, I guess, in the school of thought, that, that one is okay and the other is not. And it really, again, speaks to somebody's internal filter of how they evaluate their decision-making and the autonomy in that whole. It really puts, it puts things in a very precarious position.
Which one are you looking at?
So, Alan, just in, you know, you expressed your emotion that, you know, it doesn't feel good and, you know, maybe we can communicate in a different way or it's attacking or yelling or I'm not sure all the way you characterized it. And, you know, separate from how we all might see each other's communication, I think I just wanted to comment on, when you go to the one related to the mileage and rental reimbursement are not deemed gifting of public funds. There was oral agreement between Steve and Walker for appropriate compensation. So, in the strict letter of law, unless I filed a lawsuit and stated that that was gifting because there was nothing documented, but still the practice itself is so, is so sloppy and so risky for the, for the district. And that's really, again, what it, it is really shining a light on is those behaviors. I want to go on to the statements about Colleen Bracken. And it says that she only has limited coaching experience. It isn't as though there's a critical shortage of coaches that teach that level of swimming. But yet we've decided that it's also recommended that if she is deemed inadequate, she receives training when her position is adjusted according to her qualifications. How could her position be adjusted to her qualifications if she's not qualified? So, either she's qualified or she's not to teach swimming. I mean, to coach swimming under a head coach, she doesn't even associate these figures out herself. She's going to be directed in how to do it. So, I found that, I just found that interesting. And then boy, you know, you want to make some parents blood boil as you take a look at that stuff about suspending our kids. And it says here, Bill's decision to suspend was based on severity of a swimmer's actions or potential casualties. So, despite of the fact that, you know, six swimmers were suspended and these were swimmers who always had very good behavior and have never been disciplined and violating the code of conduct, yet they did not read the whiteboard and they went out and ran instead. And they were disciplined. Now, in the media, interestingly, it was not, you all received this actually with quite open eyes like, oh, my gosh, this is behavior that maybe is not appropriate. But here it's, boy, Bill Walker made, he made a judgment for serious consequences. Suspend this swimmers for their disregard for their coach. The parents were never notified, even though my daughter's 13, but I was not notified. So, I, I find that judgment on that to be frankly just shocking, actually. And I don't have any qualms.
This is not our fault, is it? I just wanted to bring out the point that, so this whole long list of things that aren't legal on it. But, so, and you let him here, but so we all, but would it give somebody his password and terminate him with like a kind of report, I don't know here? Maybe if that had been here, it definitely would have happened. But the previous board hired Bill Walker, Del opened the room, hired Bill Walker to get rid of me.
I don't know. I wasn't here, but I never heard that anywhere. But, you know, I certainly hear the feeling.
Okay, Emma? Emma Johnson?
I just have some suggestions for Coach Bill. Let the, let the meet for Yatina. We have to have a peace of mind because if we don't know what's going on or what's going on, we, we will get a hotel. We want to make sure we get a hotel. That's why, that's why when I got the email, I thought, oh, I didn't know you have a bar that's for a band. I know you said that, but we didn't have the email ahead of time, which is kind of threatening for us. So, that's why, let's just get a hotel and see what's going on and then we, both of you will swim. That's fine. One of you will come. But if we, we know ahead of time, we could have signed them up for the, the team, you know, the team trip and stuff like that. So, a month, you already know it's like four or five weeks. Just a little bit in there, this is what's going on. We don't have a file on it. But, you know, give us a little bit ahead of time.
What I hear you saying is you come out of this, this term, the scales of travel.
Yeah, but it's kind of too late. The information we got here. Most parents already got the hotel. Yeah, we already, we already booked hotels. We already talking about it because we haven't really got any information. So, until you have to send us the email.
What I hear you saying is you didn't have the information.
No, but the thing I think now is really that you need to...
Okay, I'm sorry. I should have said at the beginning, the public comment is to address the board. And I hear him trying to answer your question, but I got to cut it off. And hopefully you guys can handle this. I hear what you're saying and the concern is that it was...
It's a concern.
Yeah, to us. And I heard that, but I can't let this keep going.
Our culture, yes, it's a concern. And the public comment... And a poppy comment, like my kids, if we're going to return over here with what's going on on the pool. For me, as a returning parent for the kids to swim, I'm throwing my kids flat. You don't swim with them. I'd rather go to Ana Corvus with what's going on over here. So I think, I know everybody's trying to get this fixed. And we're earring in here as soon as we can. And, but it's kind of bad for the community, what happened and everything. And it's me, I'm military. And if somebody will tell me, we're going to North Ripley, what do you suggest? They're going to hear something bad because of what happened. And that's really not good for these people.
Thank you. Emily?
I just want to comment concerning girls' high school swimming. You guys were talking about, because if you didn't notice, but last year during high school swimming, every girl that participated in the district's meet had been brought up in Enwak. And not every girl that was on there are still on Enwak. But the girls that aren't on Enwak anymore, they aren't dedicated to the team. So my feelings are that this high school swim practice is not a good idea because the girls that aren't on Enwak now, they don't necessarily want to put their whole life into swimming. So they're more geared toward social life. Sorry. And I feel like it wouldn't matter to them if they skip practice and everything because that's just not their focus in life. So if we had a girls' practice, it's taking up pool space for the Enwak swimmers when we don't know who's going to show up every day. And we don't know that those swimmers are going to be so involved. And not having a lot of pool space seems like, oh, we can suck it up for a little while. But it actually really affects your stroke. If you notice some of our swimmers, when you do fly or breaststroke, if you have a lot of people in the lane, you get squished to the side of the way. And it can actually make your strokes lopsided. So I feel like with this high school swim, it's a waste of our pool type. And it's going to maybe affect our swimmers' strokes.
Okay, thank you. Molly Vought?
Yeah, I just want to finish my letter. So many of us have realized that Bill plays secret sometimes, and which is totally wrong for our coach to do. And as swimmers, we've told Bill multiple times that the swimming adrenaline is not challenging enough. He just brushes us aside. And when Thomas tells him that Bill doesn't seem beneficial or asks him his purpose, he goes into the fence more than shorts him with to say, that's just your opinion. I feel as if Bill doesn't care about us, he's not interested in getting to know us on a personal level. It has been a month and a half since he got here, and he gets everyone's names and stuff. And I mean, everyone does that once in a while. But for Bill, it's happening multiple times a day. And a few weeks ago, while we were doing a sprint shot, said Bill was shouting out to multiple swimmers that it's not good enough as they came into the wall. And he said this to them without any explanation or further comment, leaving the swimmers with lots of questions, like, what's not good enough? My technique, my effort, or is he simply saying that I'm not good enough? And most kids come, they only come every day to see their friends and get whatever workout they can from the swimming. And each person used to strive to make it to PNS, AGS, or Olympic trials. And now we all wonder if things will ever be the same again, and if the team will ever recover from the idiomatic events that happened in the past six months. And I also just wanted to bring up a concern like Emily did with the girls' high school swims because gold gets in at 4:15 every day, and we've all noticed that. As soon as Colleen comes out on deck, Bill and we're starting chatting. And so if they're going to be on, Bill and Colleen, if they're going to be on deck each day for an hour together, that's going to compromise both teams because they're not going to have the same coaching. And so we're not going to get better. And so it's just going to be hard for us to even like have a coach because they're probably just going to be talking all the time.
Thank you. Angela Formischo?
So I'm going to be joining Michelle's other.
Okay, thank you.
So there are these nine swimmers, including myself, that would be leaving Enwak if they continue to be coached by people who simply don't care to give us the training and attention we need. Because we are thankful of far more than mindless swimming. The concern should be if we leave, this team will continue to fall apart until there is no team. This will not only affect the over eighty swimmers on the team, but also all of the kids enrolled in swim lessons, hoping to someday join Enwak. And I know who supports this team. It will also directly affect this facility. Enwak has greatly involved in the passing of the last levy. And with the swimmers who stood out on the street corner lighting signs in the rain after a hard workout on a Friday night, right before the football game, because we as the team thought it was important to do our part to get that levy passed. Given the successes of our team, it appears William Walker sees Enwak as a burden. It is not the burden to the taxpayer he's concerned with by himself. The team has deteriorated. It will continue to deteriorate, which we merely believe is and has been his goal. Mr. Walker is not interested in maintaining Enwak. If he was interested as the director, he would want the team to be successful and hire staff that shares this interest in the team. This interest would not only extend to Enwak, but to New York with the Masters team as well. We understand our head coach has an architect job in Oregon, and he often shares this with us. How does this other job, it's in his job here as head coach, and the success of Enwak?
Is that it? Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. David, and I can't read the last name. Nadal?
No, that's Walton, sorry.
Oh, sorry. David. Go ahead.
There, I have a couple of names. You know, I appreciate your time being here tonight on Thursday evening. And I appreciate Coach Patterson. But I imagine that all the people who were listed in the combined staff reports are going to give the director, the head coach, the aquatics coordinator, running club, rugby, and maintenance are all employees of the Park District and not volunteers. As part of their, not necessarily employment contracts, but their duties and responsibilities, I would believe would be to attend a board meeting in which they are on the agenda to give staff reports. And I do understand that there might have been some confusion in regards to what was expected of them this evening, for example, with the running club coaches. But again, I would think that if they're on the agenda, they would be aware that they are supposed to give staff reports to.
The director always gives those.
The director always gives.
He always gives the staff reports. Has credit to, I mean, that's how it's.
We sometimes invite them back. We did invite them here tonight.
Okay, thank you very much.
But I think that they were just sitting out there, and I didn't grab them.
Yeah, we could actually ask Coach Patterson to be here tonight. That's all we can do.
The only other note that I have is my daughter loves swimming and flourished under Coach Neil, who's looking for an opportunity to continue to flourish. I don't, she hasn't expressed too much to me. But I do know that she has had reservations about coming to practices, especially with the absence of Coach Patterson. Because Coach Colleen does not have the best poolside manners from what my daughter has stated. But to give credit to Coach Patterson, I think that perhaps he is working to pick up the pieces of a broken team. And I hope that that can happen very, very shortly, as my daughter will be attending her Gabe Cutler her second AGS, her second trip to the AGS meet. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Michael Johnson?
Yeah.
And Len Vought?
I have a couple, sort of a theory of things. So you looked at these purely from a legality standpoint, did not attend to, for instance, the bylaw issue that talks about ethical conduct and tolerating common business practices, et cetera. Because that was part of the bylaw consideration. Is that correct?
On the first page.
And I'm trying to pull the bylaws up.
On the first page of what you got is what the mandate of the committee is.
Right, to investigate those charges.
In an objective manner. Just three words.
But my understanding is.
Help us out here.
Okay. So my understanding was that it was to investigate those charges, which were not necessarily all a violation of law. I mean, except that the bylaws are.
They were.
So the issue of 3.345 talks about that any ethical violation observed or recently suspected by any member will be investigated and will not cause or allow any practice, activity, decision, or organizational circumstances that is either unlawful or in violation of commonly accepted business practices or professional ethics. So, thank you. So it, but it sounds to me like you didn't actually consider the ethical issues here, but just the legal issues. Is that a correct understanding?
It's for that report, and you can speak, but for that report, because of the charges that were later informed, we dealt with the legal aspect. The other aspect, if you read the last paragraph, you'll see that we have another process which is going for next month. And we're going to do the evaluation of the performance of Bill in the human sense, in the person sense, which includes the ethical practice.
But I talked about the ethical part, and we did ask that the look.
Yeah, it's only, it's part of the whole skein of things in a section, which says all of these things have to be taken into consideration. And yes, but.
So my next question is, my next question is with regard to the credit cards. I do not see any addressing of the interim credit card and how that even came into being because it was never, ever addressed. I mean. That was the last one.
We went to the auditor, and those cards were something that were in existence before Bill was here.
No, no, no. The card with Bill's name on it, the card he got the first of December.
A comment that you made at the beginning of the evening.
I found it out. Check it out. Sorry. This is like watching a seventy-five car pileup on the freeway.
That's true. That's what I was thinking.
It just never stops, which is part of the concern.
But can you remember it?
There was a credit card, it was a credit card that came into existence on the first of December in Bill's name from Citibank, which has never been referred to except in February, when you asked about the credit cards, and he mentioned the interim card. That is the only time that card is ever documented. It was used twice during a time when it could have been used much more, but he was using Frank's card instead.
A little.
No, it's true. It had that card for December, January, February, and it never got.
Our comment on that was this is not yet completed. We have to figure that whole thing out. A card may carry a cash bank, but because your charge was about cash banks being illegal.
No, it was about everything. It was about the existence of that card. The issue, there were a number of issues about the credit card.
I'm trying to find the notes I had about that.
Oh, I have.
The second one.
It takes a couple of minutes to figure this. Which one is that?
While you're looking here, I can talk over you. I know you're doing that, but that'll expedite things. The reference to the report that was made on December thirteenth regarding the volunteerism, actually, if you go back to the meeting, that December thirteenth meeting tape, you will hear Mr. Walker say that he solicited volunteers from the district for that purpose. I'm sorry, it was in December thirteenth. It was in November. And that what he reported on in December thirteenth was actually a question of liability. It was not the question of volunteerism.
But this is the one about the two guards, the two kids at what, say, high school?
Yes. What he reported on was the question about liability in his injury. He did not report on the issue of volunteerism.
And. We went through the volunteerism and figured that out.
Right. But what happened is a reverse engineer. He did not, these were not high school volunteers. These were NWPRD volunteers, which he announced in the meeting he did. He was challenged on that and told to go investigate that. And that is in the tape. It's not in the minutes because we did revisionist there. But he said, and in fact, it was Commissioner Maron who said, I can't do that. I don't think we can do that. You need to find that out. And he came back and addressed the liability issue regarding the injury. He did not address the volunteerism issue. And then we had this trail of letters to try and reverse it. So that's my question there. That definitely, it isn't addressed.
We interviewed the two people that were involved as the volunteer. And both of them said that they had volunteered to do the job. When we asked, it wasn't a question, it wasn't a matter that they were asked to volunteer. It's a matter that, no, we volunteered to do it. We wanted to do it because we knew the kids on the team. And they didn't use our kids. But we knew the people on the team, and we were happy to come in on Saturday and do that. And then on the legal question aspect of it all, their swim coach is a certified lifesaver.
Well, we knew that. That was the first issue.
But that covered the need to have lifesavers.
We knew that.
The kids didn't have to be there, so we found out too. So we at least agree on, and hopefully finally discover.
So my last comment here is, well, but this is a dialogue here.
But it's been way over two minutes. And just be respectful. Fair to everybody else.
I beat an awful lot of our time.
Is with regard to the question being attacked, and I'd just like to address that. Until you came, Ellen, I've been to virtually every meeting since last January. And on literally one occasion, have I seen public comment be addressed as anything except wind that went past their ears? And so you've changed that, and I appreciate that, that there's at least some attention to what's being heard, what's being said. But that frustration that this is an all transmit, no receive board has a basis. And that anger for that has a basis. And so part of what unfortunately the new commissioners are stepping into is a public that has been so frustrated by a lack of attention to the public. And so unfortunately, as the leaders, that burden to resolve that lies much more in your hands than in ours. Because now it's a trust that's been broken and has to be restored. And so I think, you know, I just want to, I appreciate the notion that this is, you know, this is our time to speak, and that needs to happen. And we know you're not getting paid, and we appreciate that. However, it doesn't change the responsibility of the service.
That's absolutely right.
Okay.
But I'll get it in opposite direction, I guess. But these guys work hard, I can tell you.
Well, and out of respect for the previous board, and I was part of that board in the past year, we have heard, we have sat in this chair, we've sat across the street in the meeting chair over there for hours and hours and hours. And if you want to look at our binders, just the other notes we take where it may be perceived that we're not listening, I can assure you that we have heard all the complaints and all the concerns and taken them very seriously. And so just out of respect and in response to what you just said, Lynn, I know I personally have listened and weighed all the different aspects to all sides of the story. And I've tried to be as objective as I possibly can because that is my role, sitting up here. And that's what I'm supposed to do. So with that being said, our next meeting is Thursday, June twenty-seventh at seven P.M. And it is eight fifty-seven. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming.
You can return.
Oh, so on favor.
All right.
This is always hot here.